Um, I'll turn to turn it back over to the chair, EBD.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Stacy, could you read the next ordinance, please? Thank you.
Ordinance of the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe and Unincorporated Tribe. Ordinance of the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe to amend the Ogallala Sioux Tribe Marijuana Control Ordinance. Chapter one, general provisions, section four definitions. Chapter four marijuana facilities, section one marijuana facility operation procedures. Part C and to add section eleven inspections and compliance. And section twelve compliance and subpoenas to chapters four marijuana facilities. Whereas the Ogallala Sioux Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth nineteen thirty-five in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, codified as amended at twenty-five USC subsection five, one, two, three. And under article three of the constitution, the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe. And whereas pursuant to the constitution and bylaws of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe, the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council exercises legislative powers to enact and promulgate resolutions and ordinances. And whereas article four sections one F, one K, one M, and one W empower the tribal council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe and its members here. And whereas the tribal council enacted ordinance number sixteen dash twenty-two, amending the criminal code to allow for enhanced penalties for dangerous drug offenses on August twenty-third, twenty eighteen, and further amended by tribal council ordinance. And whereas a referendum vote was held on March tenth, twenty twenty, and the Ogallala Oyate voted in favor of the tribe adopting laws to decriminalize recreational marijuana and to approve of the use of medical marijuana. And whereas the tribal council enacted ordinance number twenty dash sixty-six, adopting the marijuana control ordinance. And whereas the Economic and Business Development Committee met on October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three and recommends amendments to clarify chapter seven, security, site management, and inventory control. Section two, seat-to-sale tracking system. And whereas the tribal council finds that adoption of the proposed amendments to the marijuana control ordinance is in the best interest of the tribe and its members. Now therefore be ordained that the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council hereby amends the Ogallala Sioux Tribe Marijuana Control Ordinance number twenty dash sixty-six, October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, to amend chapter one, general provisions. Section four definitions sample to amend chapter four marijuana facilities, section one marijuana facility operation procedures. C and delete D and to add chapter four marijuana facilities. Section eleven inspections and compliance and section twelve compliance and subpoenas to read as follows with deletions in strikeout and additions underlined in bold. Chapter one, general provisions, section four definitions sample. Means any item collected from the marijuana business that is provided to the licensed testing facility for testing or that is required by the Marijuana Commission for proposed purposes of inspection or investigation shall not exceed five grams per production batch. The following is a non-exhaustive list of types of samples. Marijuana marijuana concentrate marijuana products, soil, growing medium, water, solvent, or swab of a counter or equipment. Chapter four, section one marijuana facility operating procedures. Marijuana businesses shall not sell or serve marijuana or marijuana products at any other any time other than between the hours of six AM and eleven fifty-nine PM Monday through. Section eleven inspections and compliance. A, the commission shall direct quarterly inspections of a marijuana business and may at its sole discretion, direct inspection of marijuana business randomly at any time and without prior notice. Up to three business times per year annually to determine the marijuana business's compliance with this ordinance. In facilities where violations of this ordinance are discovered, the commission may direct additional random inspections until such time that all violations are cured. All areas, activities, and records within the licensed premises of a marijuana business are subject to inspection. Submission of an application by a license or issuance of a license to a licensee constitutes consent for inspection by the commission. B, a marijuana business shall allow immediate access to any facilities at the licensed premises upon presentation of photo identification documenting that commission representatives or inspectors affiliation with the commission. C, a marijuana business shall immediately upon request make available to the commission's representative or inspector all information including but not limited to samples, evidence, documents, recordings, photos, and videos for purposes of the inspection or investigation of an incident or complaint. The marijuana business shall make all reasonable efforts to facilitate and cooperate with inspection or investigation. D, samples collected by the Marijuana Commission during an investigation or inspection shall become the property of the Marijuana Commission. The Marijuana Commission shall furnish copies of any testing results to the licensee and shall retain the testing results and any inspection or investigation reports for a minimum of five years. The Marijuana Commission shall post inspection results as pass or fail at its office and on its website for viewing by the public, general public. E, during the inspection or investigation, the commission's representative or inspector may direct a marijuana business to test for contaminants including but not limited to mold mildew, heavy metals, plant growth regulators, and the presence of pesticides not approved for use and as defined by the ordinance. F, the failure to facilitate and cooperate with an inspection or investigation is grounds for administrative or disciplinary action against the marijuana business and or licensee including but not limited to license suspension or revocation and fines. Section twelve, compliance and subpoenas. A, the Marijuana Commission has the authority to ma- to demand access to marijuana businesses or licenses. Licensee papers, books, documents, records, correspondence, electronic communications, and other tangible things to examine and expect. Such examination and expect inspection may include subpoenas to comply comply the production of papers, books, documents, records, correspondence, electronic communication, and other tangible things. The examination and inspection of marijuana businesses, business or licensee may also include the interview of material witnesses, agents, or other persons whom the Marijuana Commission has determined is involved in the financing, management, or operation of the marijuana business. B, administrative subpoenas. The Marijuana Commission made during an inspection or investigation and prior to any hearing issue modify, amend, or resend subpoenas. Material witnesses, agents, or other persons whom the Marijuana Commission has determined are involved in the financing, management, or operation of the marijuana business may petition the commission to modify, amend, or resend subpoenas. C, general provisions administrative subpoenas for compliance and inspection purposes shall be issued in the name of the commission by the commission. Service shall be made by cer- certified mail. D, enforcement of subpoenas on the failure of a marijuana business licensee or other person reasonably to comply with the subpoena, the commission may apply to the tribal court for an order to comply compliance with the subpoena and an order for costs and fees associated with the issuance and enforcement of the subpoena or an order of contempt for any failure by a party to comply with a court order. E, the failure to reasonably cooperate with this section may result in administrative or disciplinary action against a marijuana business or licensee including but not limited to license suspension, revocation, or fines. And be it further ordained that the foregoing amendment to the Marijuana Control Ordinance shall go into effect immediately and shall supersede repeal and replace all prior inconsistent laws of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe certification.
Go ahead, Councilman Puyer.
I have a comment.
So on page three, the commission shall direct quarterly inspections of marijuana business, then it goes on to say up to three times per year. So which is it? Because I thought there's four quarters in a year. Or is that?
A random.
Is it random so it can be inspected seven times or what? You get your four quarterlies and then a random three times?
Chair, I could answer that. I was at that meeting and that's, that's what it was. The four quarterly inspections, right, George? And then three randoms. So eh, up to three, so it could be randomly inspected once or three times.
Okay.
I, 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 I want to get it clear. I mean, sometimes it be sometimes it has to be clear to the dispensaries, like let's put it that way.
Councilwoman Tapio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thanks for pointing that out and I was reading, um, I was following along as Stacy was reading and in that same sentence there that he just mentioned about three times. When the secretary read it, she said up to three business times per year in parentheses and three, but business isn't in there. So but when you read it, you said business in there. So is that something that we have to add in there that should be in there or not? Just a question.
Motion to approve.
Cons- Councilwoman Tapio, can you come point that out for us?
On page, um, ordinance, page three ordinance, the second ordinance that she read in section eleven inspections and compliance. Under A, the commission shall direct quarterly inspections of a marijuana business and may at its sole discretion, direct the inspection of marijuana businesses randomly at any time and without prior notice up to three. And then she said business times per year annually, but the word business is not in the sentence here. So I was just wondering if that was supposed to be in there or not?
No, it's not. I
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman Cross. Okay, so we have a motion by, uh, Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilman Cross. Secretary, call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins, senior?
Oh.
Jimmy X?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, senior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins, senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, junior?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
George Dreamer, junior?
Yes.
Robin Tapio?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Not voting.
David Puyer? Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Upstain.
Jackie Sears?
Upstain.
John Steele, senior?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Well, yes, two abstain, two not voting, motion carried.
That's it. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, committee.
Okay, we'll move on to our next line item. We'll go education, uh, has no li- um, agenda items, finance committee, no agenda items. Uh, HHS, I'll turn it over to the chair.
Resolution of the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe approving the disenrollment Denise Marie Paint from the Ogallala Sioux Tribe membership. Whereas the Ogallala Sioux Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth nineteen thirty-five in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection fifty-one, twenty-three. And under article three of the constitution, the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe. And whereas pursuant to the OST constitution and bylaws of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe, the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council exercises legislative powers to enact and promulgate resolutions and ordinances. And whereas article two of the OST constitution authorizes the tribal council to adopt laws covering tribal membership. And whereas article four, section one J of the OST constitution empowers the tribal council to enact resolutions or ordinances not inconsistent with article two concerning tribal membership. And whereas Denise Marie Paint requests disenrollment from the Ogallala Sioux Tribe membership pursuant to OST ordinance number eighteen dash zero three enrollment code section sixteen point six point one zero two relinquishment. And whereas by motion and vote on October tenth, twenty twenty-three, the OST Health and Human Services Committee recommended that the tribal council approve the request for relinquishment of Ogallala Sioux tribal membership by disenrollment for Denise Marie Paint. Now therefore be resolved that the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council does hereby approve the request for relinquishment of Ogallala Sioux tribal membership enrollment and all rights as a tribal member therein for Denise Marie Paint effective immediately, immediately, motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle. Second by Councilwoman Tapio. Secretary, call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins, senior?
Oh.
Jimmy X?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, senior?
Yes.
Austin Watkins, senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
No.
Wendell Youngman, junior?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
James Cross?
Oh.
George Dreamer, junior?
No.
Robin Tapio?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
No.
David Puyer?
No.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
John Steele, senior?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Rooks, would you like to vote?
Eleven yes, five no, one not voting, motion carried.
Thank you. Next one is a resolution of Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council of Ogallala Sioux Tribe authorizing the OST Childcare and Development Program to pay the larger childcare providers from the childcare and development programs ARPA stabilization funds. Whereas the Ogallala Sioux Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation that has entered into treaties as a supreme law of the land with the United States government pursuant to the US Constitution, article six, and is a signatory to the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen fifty-one, one stat seven four nine, and the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen sixty-eight, fifteen stat sixty-five, and continues the nation-to-nation relationship with the federal government. And whereas the Ogallala Sioux Tribe organized under section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection fifty-one, twenty-three by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws. And under article three of the tribal constitution, the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas articles four, sections one F, one K, one M, and one W empower the tribal council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe and its membership. And whereas the OST Childcare and Development Program assists childcare providers with assistance to provide childcare services. And whereas the childcare program has received a stabilization grant under the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one, PL one one seven dash two with the purpose of giving tribes the resources and opportunity to address the financial burdens faced by childcare providers during and after the COVID nineteen public health emergency and the instability of the childcare market as a whole. And whereas the childcare program has fourteen childcare providers that are eligible for receiving stabilization grant funding and needs tribal council authorization to pay them. And whereas the OST Health and Human Services has reviewed the recommended and has reviewed should I say and recommend Stacy? There's a typo there. Has reviewed and recommends to the tribal council the authorization to pay the eligible childcare providers from the OST Childcare Program Stabilization Grant as listed. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ogallala Sioux Tribe Council does hereby authorize OST Childcare and Development Program to pay the eligible childcare providers in the amounts as listed below. Do I read that? Do I read that or no? Because there's a parentheses after that. So I guess, uh, do I, do I read this or no? Is the question.
Is there anything confidential?
Oh, it's the providers and their award amount.
Oh, okay. Uh, I, I, I think she wants to add something to that.
Well, I think, I think to finish this and then let her add after?
Yeah.
Okay, so number one, it says as listed below, number one, provider Candace Brewer, capacity ten to twenty children, award amount up to three, three hundred thousand. Number two, Corina Phelps, ten to twenty children, up, award amount up to three hundred thousand. Number three, OAL CSD Rocky Ford, ten to twenty children, up, award amount up to three hundred thousand. Number four, OAL CSD Little Eagles Nest, ten to twenty children, up to three hundred thousand. Number five, OAL CSD Lakota Tech, ten to twenty children, up to three hundred thousand. Thunder Valley Montessori, ten to twenty children, up to three hundred thousand. Thunder Valley Payabia, ten to twenty children, up to three hundred thousand. Thunder Valley Thorp Loop, ten to twenty children, up to three hundred thousand. Onward Learning, twenty to fifty children, up to five hundred thousand. Oyate Tetcha, fifty or more children, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Visions of Suan, five fifty or more children, up to seven hundred and fifty thousand. Janine, Mary Tobacco Group, seven or more, up to one hundred thousand. Feather Lebo, group seven or more, up to one hundred thousand. Julie Corderier, group seven or more, up to one hundred thousand. The grand total of four million, seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, a motion to approve, um, with a addition from the director of childcare.
Okay, uh, we have a question over here first. Go ahead, Council.
Pigeon could answer this, but we were just looking at it and the one for, uh, Thunder Valley Payabia, that's in our district, is that the number four? There's nobody there. So where's that located?
Talk into your microphone.
Oh. Where's that located? It's, uh, number seven, Thunder Valley Payabia, there's nobody utilizing that building is what we're saying. So where's that at?
Um, it was previously at Payabia when, um, they first opened. However, they have moved and I believe that they moved to Pine Ridge School.
So maybe we better change that.
Okay.
That name, maybe just for, uh, that way doesn't, um, bring up any kind of thinking that there's something out there that's being utilized in our district.
Correct. And we have their application on file and so we'll make sure that that is corrected in the application.
Maybe by, uh, whoever made that motion, maybe Ryan, if you could, uh, amend that
Okay.
to say Pine Ridge School.
Yeah, but it is Thunder Valley, so Thunder Valley is the recipient.
Yeah, maybe number seven is just Thunder Valley Pine Ridge School or something. Thank you.
And Pigeon, what did you want to add?
Oh, so I just want to make sure that it's clear that it is up to that amount because, um, and as long as funds are available. Because if funds do run out, I don't want, um, any provider to feel like the tribe owes them from another fund because the council made a motion and set up to this amount. So I want to make sure that it is clear that as long as funds are available.
Oh geez, can you include another, whereas Stacy in there or or for, therefore be it resolved?
Okay, so with amendments? Go ahead, Councilman Lunderman.
Yes, so how, so on here it says ten to twenty children, but what if there's somebody that has fifteen? How do you determine that, that amount, that amount? Because I know it says up to three hundred thousand, but how do you determine that amount if somebody's within that ten to twenty range?
Um, it is the same, so it's up to that three hundred thousand, so regardless of if it's ten or fifteen, as long as it's in that range, they are eligible for up to that amount. It is not, it, it is somewhat per child. However, it depends on what they're needing because every one of them is different. Some might need, um, outdoors equipment, some might not, some might need, um, new doors, some might not.
So it's based off of their needs then?
Correct, individual.
Okay, yeah, that was my question.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, any more question? Go ahead, uh, Councilwoman Sears.
Yeah, hi, Pigeon. Um, I didn't make it to the last HHS meeting, but I did have a question on the tax part of it. Did you guys get that resolved?
Yes, we've been working with Tally Meyer and he's been helpful in helping us, helping train us so that we can um, best guide our providers in their tax burden and help them prepare for their tax season. And then we will be having a taxed training for all these providers in January. So yes, we have worked that out.
All right, thank you.
Still my motion to approve with all them amendments added, I mean, them additions.
One more to that. So these are just for the larger providers.
Correct, we have other, um, providers that don't exceed that seventy-five thousand dollar threshold.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle. We have second. Second by Councilman Yellowboy. Secretary, call for the vote.
Ryan, for the record, I just want to clarify your amendment. So, um, on number seven, Thunder Valley Payabia, change that to Pine Ridge School, right? Okay, and then you said to put an amendment in there, so, um, that therefore be it resolved that the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council does hereby authorize OST Childcare and Development Program to pay the eligible childcare providers, not to exceed the amount as listed below, as funds are available? Does that sound okay or do we need legal to revise that?
Yes, go ahead.
I think we also need to put a, a thing in there that states that these individuals will be responsible for their own taxes.
These individuals will be responsible for their own taxes. Cause that's not addressed in that. And I did ask the Director and she said that's okay to put that in there. So the tax, maybe a there, another therefore be ordained that, or amended or whatever. That that be put in there that they're responsible for their own taxes.
Okay. Alright, we're on the motion.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Jim Inks.
Yep.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Howard Rooks.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Robin Tapio.
Yes.
Tyler Londoner.
Yes.
David Poyer. Sonia Littlehawk Weston. Jackie Sears.
Uh-huh.
John Steele Senior. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Unanimous seventeen, motion carried. Also recognize Councilman Ghost Bear at one forty-four.
That's it Chair, thank you.
Okay, so, uh. We're gonna, um, I'm gonna allow the, uh. Um, the Treasurer to do her report. Uh, because she's, uh, has an appointment that she needs to attend. Treasurer?
Put my Craig, cause I'm scared. Um. I have. The report with several attachments included in the report, I have the General Fund Report. And the indirect cost report. Um, as you can see. There are. Several people who are over on their travel. But, um. I have still been allowing them to travel. Um, as long as it has to do with tribal business. I have also allowed, because there's nothing that says you can't. Um, budget mods for, um. To move within your budget for assistance. And some of you have done that to help people in your community. I know I just gave it to you, but I'll also be at Finance on Thursday. If you have any questions on it, um. Anna did ask me about a couple of things within the budget. One of them was the Ogallala Ridge Store. It's in here, listed, included in the General Fund Budget. But it, the budget in here for the Ogallala Store has never been utilized. Nothing is posted to it, nothing has been paid from it. They do have a separate account on a separate system that was, um. Monitored by the previous Treasurer and, um, Casey. And now Tony is monitoring that program to ensure that they stay within their budgets. Cause they had to make a new budget to utilize that. Um, we do have. An item on the Executive Board Agenda. And that is a contract for. Um, Robert Palmer, Director of Revenue, to assist with the management and planning. Of the Oyate General Store. We also have, um, we found the contract. For the person who's supposed to be responsible for the repairs. I don't know if you've been in there recently, but they put in the new cabinets along one wall. Um, and they're working on closing up the other wall. Um, they're waiting for the countertop for the back wall where the soda machine and coffee machines are. And they'll put those in and, um. They're supposed to seal up. The addition. Um, honestly, I, I think that addition was a little pointless. Because you can't see it from anywhere within the store. So. It's, um, kind of wasted space, I guess, unless they're gonna use it for storage. Cause otherwise it could be a security issue. Um. They, they are supposed to be working on sealing up the. The walls and the. Where, where everything meets. In that addition, because when we did go out to see it. You could see the sunlight through the, where everything meets, the corners, joists, whatever they're called. So he's supposed to be sealing that up now as well. Um. We did file the application for EBT. And the average time is about six months to get EBT approval. And, but once you get EBT approval, WIC approval will be easier. Um, you just have to make sure that you have everything that WIC is required to have for their. Their, um. Whatever they're called, clients. Have a question?
Question? Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you Chair. Hey Cora, what about, um, the fuel? Are they still selling it below what they bought it for, per gallon?
Yes, they are, not below what they bought it for. Um, previously. Um, the manager had them, it was. They told them to keep the gas, the fuel, well, the gas at. Seventeen cents above cost. So that's what they charge. Just seventeen cents above cost, but that's why it's the cheapest gas on the rez. We don't really make much off of it. Just.
So are we gonna kind of just keep that like as a service, or do you think we should ask them to raise it or, or?
Well, that's why I'm hoping that Bob's contract will get approved at XB.
No.
Soon.
Okay.
So we can, um.
Get Bob rolling?
Yeah.
I think also too, we need to start pushing some of the tri- tribal vehicles there to fuel up too, so we can keep that money kind of going in a circle too, so.
I, I did ask Dean to, um, ask, well, send out a notice, a reminder that we do have a policy on buy Indian, buy local. So. Unless the service can't be provided here, then they're required to use our services here. Um, are there any other questions about the store, but?
Oh, go ahead, Councilwoman.
So, Cora, I think on the, this quote you gave us on Salesforce.
Oh yeah, that was another.
I know there was a lot of concerns with, uh, with it last time. And I think we heard later, uh. Why maybe this wasn't pushed forward? I think you told us that. And so. What are, are you proposing this again?
Yes.
And is this a, a quote along with, uh, this other one?
Okay, uh.
W I P E L I? Is those two quotes?
It's, it's one together.
They're both together?
Explain it.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear, if you could explain that.
Uh, um, I'll just jump right into that then, from the store. But the quotes that I brought are from Salesforce and Whipley. Whipley actually owns Salesforce and Karasok now. So that's what the quotes are for. Um, it's for the program, the building of the program, the building of the drives. The building of the software, um, training for our staff. Including program directors. And, and our IT. And Whipley would, um. Carry it through. Their, because I know that they're currently our auditors and I had to look to find out if we could. Go into a contract them since Whipley is currently our auditing firm. But we can because it's a separate part of the company. So. That, that was why I brought this forth today and I have been talking to Johanna. And one of the issues that we're both having is that some directors have no. Um. How do I put this nicely? Budgeting experience, I guess you could say. And, um, several do not keep cup accounts. I mean, honestly, I don't know how you run a program without keeping cup accounts. Um, so, one of the, one of the functions of the Salesforce. Would be to have a grants management program. And we currently do not have grants management software. I mean, if you ask an experienced director, what's your grants management software? Nine out of ten are gonna say, uh, Excel? Because they keep track of everything through Excel. So, the Salesforce. We brought them one time last term, they were approved. And then it was tabled and then never brought back again. But they, they currently work with, um. This week they're at Muskogee Creek putting in a system for, uh. Tribal member portal. And they also work with Cherokee Nation. Um, I think next week they're going to be at Navajo Nation, cause they just got approved for them as well. Um, they build these websites, not a website, but attach it to our website. And I want to touch on that too in a minute, but they build these portals for tribal members. Where a tribal member can go into the system and they can put their enrollment number. And they can see every assistance that they qualify for. And I, I think, um, right now, within the tribe, we don't have a case management system. So we have some tribal members who never get assistance. And we have some tribal members. Who always get assistance. So if we had a case management system, we could get information to our tribal members. And everybody who qualifies for that assistance can apply for that assistance. Because right now there are so many people who think that you still only get two hundred bucks for energy, so they don't even bother applying. Which is kind of sad, you know? Cause energy will help you with six hundred dollars to, for your propane or electricity. And there's not. Not enough people utilizing it. And anytime that there's, um, like hardship or education or other types of assistance. That, that could all be put in the system. And the tribal members could actually apply through the system. Oh, is Bryce on? Okay. And, um, but I, I think it's really time to move forward. Because these systems can also be put on your phone. And everybody has a phone, just about. And everybody's command phone has access to wifi. I mean, I know that you get a free phone at Cap Office and. Sometimes you don't even pay your five bucks, so. You still have the phone, you can use wifi, but you can't use the phone. But if you get into the app, it will help you to, to know what programs you can qualify for. We could also put enrollment on there so people can, um, apply for enrollment. So, I think that we should really seriously move forward with the Salesforce now and. Because we need to have some way to keep track, and one of the biggest things that I think is a good thing with this. Is that once you have your grants management software in place, so you have all of your tribal members in. And all of your, your, the demographic information will also be put in. Because whenever you put in your en- enrollment, you have your address. And if you're a student, if you're not a student, you're employed, if you're not employed, you know? When you apply for any kind of program. You'll still, will have your demographic information and that could help the directors, our directors apply for grants. And new funding. Because right now, getting demographics is almost impossible. Unless you send someone to go count numbers yourself. And that's a lot of extra work that could be done by a computer. I mean, we spend so much on software and hardware right now anyway. So we should be utilizing it more efficiently.
So. Is that, you still have the floor, Mr. President? Did you, are we going to RFP this out?
We could if you want to.
Yeah, I think we should RFP it out, because I think that, um, we need to follow our financial management. Um, policy. And I think that when it was brought up the last time, I think we wanted it, uh, RFP'd out, remember?
Yeah.
And so I think we should RFP it out and, um, maybe at that time, if they come back, they're the lowest and I think. We should consider it, but I think right now we have that policy, so we should, uh, RFP it out and then, uh, bring it back.
And then the other thing along with this that I think should probably be RFP'd is our website. We need a web designer and a web, um, master, because right now we don't have anybody. And we should be getting that information out there. Whenever there's anything available, we should be putting it out there, and right now we don't really have anything but our Facebook pages. So if, if it's okay, if we can have a motion to RFP the, um, portal. The enrollment portal.
I'll motion that, uh, Mr. President.
Okay.
I'll motion to RFP out the, um, what are we gonna call it? Cause we can't say Salesforce.
Grants Management and Enrollment Portal.
Okay, Grants, Grants Management and Enrollment Portal.
Okay.
Yeah, to RFP it out.
Well, we have a, a few questions here first, I'll let Councilwoman Sears and then Councilman Yellow Boy go. Oh, you second, okay, go ahead, Council.
Uh, I was just gonna do that, but can you put a timeline on it? Cause we did this last administration and, and it's back here again, so.
Right.
There was no timeline last time.
Well, this is the end of the month, so I think if, uh, we have a special, uh, next month or, um.
Just save that for December.
Yeah, as soon as she can get it RFP'd out, then I think maybe we could call a special under Finance Committee. Maybe we should do that through Finance.
Alright.
And then bring it back.
Motion, okay, long as there's a timeline on there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do it next week.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilwoman Littlehawk Weston and then second by Councilwoman Sears.
Right. Well, I was hoping if we could RFP it, then we could do it in January.
Okay, Secretary call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh, oh.
Jim Inks.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior. Howard Rooks. Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior. Wendell Youngman Junior? Anna Halverson?
Yes.
James Cross? George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Robin Tapio? Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
David Poyer? Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Jackie Sears? Don Ray Gossberg?
Yes.
John Steele Senior? Craig Dillon?
Sixteen yes, two not voting, motion carried. Okay, so we have a motion by.
Motion to RFP for a web designer. A webmaster, right?
It was a separate.
And a webmaster, yeah.
Okay, so motion by Councilwoman Tapio. Second, second by Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston. Call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Oh.
Jim Eeks?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior? Howard Rooks? Austin Watkins Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior? Anna Halverson?
Yes.
James Cross? George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Robin Tapio?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman? David Poyer? Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Jackie Sears? Don Ray Gossberg?
Yes.
John Steele Senior?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Sixteen yes, two not voting, motion carried.
Thank you. Um, the next item is an item that we've been working on in Finance and Law and Order. Um, well, at their direction and Rayanne sent the ordinance, so I'm bringing it here now. It's um, ordinance of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe authorizing the use of the non-refundable fund to increase the pay for the Attorney General position. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation that has entered into treaties as a supreme law of the land with the United States government pursuant to the U.S. Constitution, Article Four, and is a signatory to the Treaty of the Fort, of Fort Laramie of eighteen fifty-one, one statute seven forty-nine and Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen sixty-eight, fifteen statute six thirty-five. And continues the nation-to-nation relationship with the federal government. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe organized under Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws under Article three of the tribal constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. Whereas Article four, sections one F, one K, one M, and one W empower the tribal council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pinridge Indian Reservation and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and its membership. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council enacted ordinance number ninety-seven dash zero-three in support of establishing an Attorney General Office with the intent of entering into APL ninety-three six thirty-eight with the Bureau of Indian Affairs. And whereas the Attorney General Office is led by one Attorney General that is a, that is a licensed attorney that oversees and supervises the staff of the Attorney General's Office, including prosecutors and clerks and is responsible for the enforcement of tribal laws through the prosecution of cases in tribal court. And whereas the OST Attorney General must have the skills and knowledge to prosecute cases in tribal court and provides sound legal advice to tribal entities, including but not limited to law enforcement corrections, tribal council, and be of it, be able to work collaborative, collabor- collaboratively with other justice systems with knowledge of treaties, tribal, state, federal laws and jurisdictional issues. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe is in a state of emergency due to an increase in crimes and gun violence and currently does not have an Attorney General. And whereas the tribe is having difficulty recruiting and retaining licensed attorneys at the current salary for the Attorney General position. And whereas both the Law and Order Committee and the Finance Committee have determined that it is in the best interest of the tribe to increase the salary for the Attorney General position to be comparable and competitive with surrounding areas in order to attract qualified applicants. And whereas the tribe does not have a sufficient tax base or revenue generating economy to support the infrastructure for its justice system at this time. And six thirty-eight funding is insufficient to meet the needs of the tribe. And whereas the tribe has a non-refundable account that currently has funds to support an increase in the Attorney General position salary until other funds can be sought, sought after and available. And whereas the OST Law and Order Committee and the OST Finance Committee has reviewed and proposed, reviewed the proposed ordinance and wishes to increase the Attorney General position salary up to one hundred twenty-five thousand per annum and recommends the approval of the increase with funds utilized from the non-refundable account funds. Now therefore be it ordained that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council does hereby approve the standing committee's recommendations and authorizes the utilization of not, of the non-refundable account funds to increase the Attorney General position salary up to one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars per annum based on experience and qualifications until an alternate funding source is obtained or until funds are unavailable. And be it further ordained that the tribal council through its standing committees and/or the OST Executive Committee assists the Attorney General's Office in seeking an increase in six thirty-eight funding for the Attorney General. And be it further ordained that this ordinance shall take effect immediately and shall supersede, repeal and replace all prior inconsistent laws of the Oglala Sioux Tribe.
Question, we have a question. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm gonna motion to table this, this is a Law and Order Committee item. And we were supposed to have a working session last Tuesday and Wednesday, if you all recall. And that working session was supposed to involve the A.G., the courts, the police, everybody. And at that time, this, we keep talking about this non-refundable fund that is out there, but what I heard is that that is earmarked for different entities within the public safety and within, within our court system. And this money is earmarked for other programs. So I've been trying to get clarification on that before we go and start taking money from somewhere where we don't even know if it's already been obligated. And that was the importance of having, one of the importance of having that meeting last week. You know, I'm glad you said, you brought up the state of emergency because we need to talk about that. Things are out of control on this reservation, there's homicides, there's deaths, there's everything every day. And the Chief of Police, where is he in all of this? You know? So I'm gonna motion to table this until we have that working session that got canceled that needs to be put on the front burner. Thank you.
Okay, so we got a motion by Councilwoman Tapio, got a second by Councilwoman Halverson to uh, table. Secretary call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins Senior? Jim Eeks?
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior? Howard Rooks? Austin Watkins Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
No.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
No.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
James Cross?
No.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Robin Tapio?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
No.
David Poyer? Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Yeah.
Jackie Sears?
Yeah.
Don Ray Gossberg?
Yes.
John Steele Senior? Craig Dillon?
No.
Five yes, twelve no, one not voting, motion failed. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
You know, I think that um, I have to say that we do need an Attorney General in this position as soon as possible. And I'm hoping that we can get somebody in there right away. Um, you know, we are in a state of emergency, Mr. President, and I think you declare, you put that out there. And I think today we have to move forward and try to get somebody in there. And I know that with our budget, the way it sits today, it's not feasible enough to, to uh, keep somebody in there. And I think that we need to um, you know, try to find another avenue of uh, resources to help fund this position. So I think we need to move forward. And uh, so if this is passed today, I think we need to get this Attorney General position advertised right away. And I think we should do it today. And I don't, I think we should give it a time limit or timeframe. Maybe a couple of weeks to get somebody in there, but uh, I think Mr. Chair of our Law and Order Committee, if you're agreeable to that, I think we should do that. Is it advertised now? So as soon as that's advertised, it's advertised now, so we should, hopefully this will draw in some uh, some good applicants that are qualified, but a motion to uh, approve this uh, the ordinance.
Okay, we have uh, questions, go ahead, Councilman Poyer.
I, I didn't hear no part in there about, because we also talked about raising the salaries of the prosecutors. But we didn't set a salary. And we, I thought what we said, I don't know if we took action, I know we discussed it in Law and Order. But that, those salaries wouldn't take effect because the prosecutor's terms are up in April. It would take effect with the, those prosecutors at that time. And, and the reason we said that is we thought we would get some more applicants if we raised that. Because that salary said at twenty-five thousand for the last, since nineteen thirty-four, I think, no, I just said that. But, but, but we need to set a salaries to, to attract some people in there for that too.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Yellowboy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with Sonia and I, and if she would put a timeframe, I know it's being advertised, but I think we need to um, maybe at the end of the December session. That way it gets out there and we need to make sure that this gets advertised because you know, we, we are in a dire need. Like Robin said, we do have issues with prosecuting and, and you know, we're running into issues where you know, some of our people that we put in these positions to, to in uh, be our school board positions, they have questions as well with some of the cases, so you know, I think the, the faster this gets out there, the, and, and the more we push it, now that it's, you know, if this does pass, then you know, so if Sonia could, you know, add that to her motion.
Yeah, I could be, I could amend my motion to include uh, do we want to say the end of December by the next council meeting or do we want to call a special?
I think we should have the Law and Order Chair call the special.
Call a special, Mr. Chair.
When he gets applicants or.
And uh, you get the applicants back.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I got no problem on that, but you guys all have to agree. Most of you are in Law and Order. We do need Attorney General if this gets passed and um, and the money's there, I see no problem that someone will come in right away. Right now, we got no money. You know, instead of trying to help get things rolling, we sit here and we get mad and stuff. We need Attorney General. We need to help our law enforcement. But we sit here, we judge everybody. But you know, I'm glad this was brought for us, it was brought through Law and Order. They discussed it and it was pushed on to finance. So you know, it's not something that, it's just up and brought up. So you know, I got no problem, Chairman, we make a special, but I need to check in and see how many people, I heard there are two of them that are trying to apply. But this will help if we get it going.
So I'll second, I'll second her motion.
Okay, we got a couple more questions on the floor, go ahead, Councilman Youngman. Okay, uh, Councilman Gossberg.
I'll try, I just forgot how many applicants were in, so he said there's two, so.
Two, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion by, who, um, okay, Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston and second by uh, Councilman Yellowboy. Secretary call for the vote.
Um, Sonia, just to clarify for the record, so you want to add another whereas where it says the Law and Order Chairman will call a special when applicants are received? Okay. Thank you. Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Oh.
Jim Eeks? Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior? Howard Rooks? Austin Watkins Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior? Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
David Poyer? Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Of course.
Jackie Sears? Don Ray Gossberg?
Yes.
John Steele Senior? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Fourteen yes, three not voting, motion carried.
Thank you, um, Lisa, and I will bring the um, budget to the next Law and Order meeting. Right? Um, next I have a couple of resolutions. Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe authorizing the treasure to draw down funds from account number P L last three numbers zero one five held by the Department of Interior. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe organized under Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four adopted by a federally approved constitution and bylaws under Article three of the tribal constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas Article four, section one F, the tribal consti- of the tribal constitution empowers the tribal council to manage the tribe's economic affairs. And whereas the Oglala, the OST Land Lease Income Account P L last three digits zero one five held by the Department of Interior has currently has a balance of three hundred ninety-eight thousand, three seventy-six and forty-one cents. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council does hereby approve the drawdown from P L last three digits zero one five held by the Bureau of Trust Funds Administration, Department of Interior in the amount of three hundred thousand ninety-eight, three hundred ninety-eight thousand, three hundred seventy-six dollars and forty-one cents for transfer to the general fund account of the Oglala Sioux Tribe at the First National Bank in Gordon, Nebraska. Consistent with the instructions to be provided by the treasurer of the Oglala Sioux Tribe in a separate letter to the appropriate trust officer of the Bureau of Trust Funds Administration, including the name of the financial institution in which the account is held, the account number and the routing number.
Motion, second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilman Poyer, second by Councilman Dillon. Secretary call for the vote?
Wesley Hawkins Senior? Jimmy?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior? Howard Rooks? Austin Watkins Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman? David Poyer? Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Jackie Sears?
Oh, huh.
Don Ray Gospair?
Yes.
John Steele Senior?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Thirteen yes, two not voting, motion carried.
Okay, resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe authorizing the treasure to draw down funds from the from account number PL last three digits seven oh six, held by the Department of Interior. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe organized under Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws, and under Article three of the tribal constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And whereas Article four sections one F of the tribal constitution empowers the tribal council to manage the tribe's economic affairs. And whereas the Land Lease Income Account, PL last three digits seven oh six, held by the Department of Interior currently has a balance of one million, three hundred twenty-four thousand, one hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council does hereby approve drawdown, a drawdown from PL last, whoops, I put the wrong number on that bottom one. Last and my pen just ran out of ink. Last three digits. Seven oh six. By the Bureau of Trust Funds Administration, Department of Interior, in the amount of one million, three hundred twenty-four thousand, one hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents for transfer into the general fund account of the Oglala Sioux Tribe at the First National Bank of, in Gordon, Nebraska. Consistent with instructions to be provided by the treasurer of the Oglala Sioux Tribe in a separate letter to the appropriate trust officer of the Bureau of Trust Funds Administration, including the name of the financial institution in which the account is held, the account number, and the routing number.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilman Watkins, or Hawkins, and second by Councilman Dillon. Oh, Councilman Poyer. Motion by Councilman Poyer, second by Councilman Hawkins. Secretary call for the vote?
Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Oh.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Howard Rooks? Austin Watkins Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Anna Halverson? Anna Halverson? James Cross?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yeah.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Jackie Sears?
Oh, huh.
Don Ray Gospair?
Yes.
John Steele Senior?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Fifteen yes, one not voting, motion carried.
Thank you. Um, I just have a couple more things before I, I tell the cops not to watch the road while I speed to the hospital. It does. Um, the, the district allocations should be out by tomorrow. We are waiting for some reports. We still haven't received a few. But the allocations should, will be released tomorrow. Whether, whether they have not, um, if, if they have submitted their reports, um, except for Pass Creek District. But we're dealing with which one? Yeah, we just did both of them. I did two.
You.
Yes. That was only a quick, not, not. But allocations will be out, and we are working on a plan for Pass Creek um, to help them take care of their bills from last winter's season. Um, we did get a FEMA reimbursement for emergency management. We're, um, breaking it down to figure out how much is emergency management and how much goes to the other programs. And I'll let you know about that on finance. And, uh, I think that was, I think it, yeah.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I don't know if we could, uh, if, I think we, I think we asked if you could give us, uh, an update on the finances with the casino, but we want to do that in executive real quick before she leaves. If you can, uh, put us into executive for about five minutes.
Okay, I'll, I'll allow that. Go ahead, Councilman Poyer.
Do, I, I just wanted to bring something up on the FEMA thing, because some of the, the districts a couple of years ago also submitted reports, and we're expecting reimbursement back from FEMA also. So I don't know if this is part of that or?
Right, that, that's part of the research that we're doing. Steve is pulling all of their reports together. Because this is from two thousand twenty-one, I think. And we had, we just received, I guess we cried around enough.
Yeah, I, I believe it's from the last disaster, right? Because I know the current one that we declared in December, uh, it hasn't hit yet.
Not yet. This one is from twenty twenty.
Or nineteen, I believe, I'm not sure on it. Okay, uh, Sergeant Arms, uh, if we could clear the room, we'll go into executive. Or, I'm sorry, let's, let's run the motion.
Motion to go into executive.
So we have a motion by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston over the casino.
Second.
And second by Councilwoman Sears. Secretary call for the vote?
Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Oh.
Jimmy?
Yep.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior? Howard Rooks? Austin Watkins Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior? Anna Halverson?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yep.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
David Poyer? Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Uh.
Jackie Sears? Don Ray Gospair? John Steele Senior?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Fifteen yes, one not voting, motion carried. Uh, we'll go into executive.
Recording stopped.
At two thirty-one? Uh, just a quick housekeeping.